And at this time, I'm going to call the meeting to order. The meeting of July 27, 2020, and the Board of Supervisors of North Coventry Township. On this Zoom call tonight, our board members Spencer Claypool, Rick Schiller, Rebecca Elliott, and myself, Jim Marks. Joining us is our Township Manager Erica Badorf and our Solicitor Dan Sager. So at this time. You're going to welcome everybody. First on the agenda is the minutes of July 13. The board, you had this in your packet, do I have any comments or corrections on the minutes from July 13? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 13, 2020?
So moved.
Spencer made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Rick seconded it, all in favor?
All in.
I opposed. And the minutes pass, minutes are approved. Bills, we have unpaid bills totaling $13,192. Since the last meeting, we have a list of paid bills and payroll totaling $107,563. Any comments on the bills? Any comments from the public on the bills? Hearing, hearing none, do I have a motion to pay the $13,192? And acknowledge the $107,563 of payroll and paid items since the last meeting?
So moved.
I heard Rebecca first, and Rick, are you seconding it?
Yes.
So have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, developers' bills, any comments on the developers' bills?
The only one I have is, what are we going to do with Bentley?
Yeah. Erica? And/or Dan, comments on, on this?
Yeah, I've continued to follow up on quite a few occasions regarding these bills, and they have been remained unpaid at this point. I think our policy as far as replenishing the escrow, that no township consulting or staff time really should move forward and proceed without having those, those bills paid at this point. I know we're waiting on officially the presentation of appraisal as the next step in reviewing the fee and lieu of circumstances surrounding the open space requirement for that subdivision.
Well, we also have Penmark Holdings that are 60 days out also. They both fall in the same category. So my recommendation would be yes, not to do anything more going forward with either one of them.
Okay, so no work on either of these two will commence until past due balances are brought current.
Okay.
But also with that being said, what about as far as getting escrows reestablished for both of them? You know, and going forward, so we don't continue to run into this problem?
Yeah, the, the bill that had gone out to Mr. Bentley included that requirement of replenishing that escrow. In addition to some substantial bills that were due for the latest review of that subdivision. I know with Penmark and Coventry Mall, they're, they're really going to be deciding what they want to do with the plan. But regardless, they have to pay that bill. But yes, I agree, they need to handle having that escrow established in addition to even processing the invoices that do come in, so understood.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on the developers' bills? Okay, we're going to move on to subdivision and land development and zoning. Nothing really under subdivision and land development, but we did receive an application from a resident for the alternate position for, on the zoning hearing board. Her name is Diane Garvin, she's a township resident, she is on the call here tonight. Diane, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
All right, great, welcome Diane.
Thank you.
I spoke to Diane last week. And she, spoke to her a little bit about what the position is and what her, a little bit about her resume. Invited her to attend the zoning hearing meeting that was held on Thursday night, which she did on Zoom. And invited her here tonight to meet the rest of the board and answer any questions you might have in hopes of appointing her to the position of alternate. So Diane, why don't you start and just tell us a little bit about yourself? You know, your resume that we kind of discussed last week and why you want the position?
All right, you asked for a little, I can give you a lot.
Okay.
Hello everyone, I'm Diane Garvin. I live at 857 Shell Road. I've been in North Coventry Township for four years. I am a career federal employee. I work for the Nuclear Regulatory Commission. My life is public service, and it's my passion to give back. I've been looking for something to do to help collaborate in North Coventry Township to keep it great. And I saw the opportunity, put my package in, and here I am, thank you.
So we're going to open it up to questions from the board.
I will comment, Diane is a neighbor of mine. No, that's good.
I saw you at lunch today.
I certainly have no qualms or anything with her being on the board, so. I agree with the appointment.
Erica, do you have any, any comments or questions you want to provide to Diane?
I'm glad that Diane had attended the last zoning hearing. I think that's, you know, a really important part of it, just getting acclimated with things and with the township. And, you know, I appreciate the years of, you know, public service that, you know, you've provided and, you know, your experience and background. I think you bring an interesting perspective that'll be valued when we have the opportunity where we do have conflicts and have to bring in an alternate into the zoning hearing board for those hearings. So certainly would encourage, you know, moving forward, getting to know the ordinances and, you know, the different aspects of the township as I am as well. So that's my, thank you.
Will do, thanks.
Erica, Erica, is there, is there training or is there seminars? Are there things that she can view that would be beneficial?
There definitely are. PSAT is a great resource for zoning hearing board, you know, the positions, what it entails, you know, the legalities around that position and, you know, this, just essentially the role of, you know, that position and zoning law, the municipality's planning code and all those different things. So that, in addition to the Chester County Planning Commission's a really good resource as well. So we can definitely connect her with those resources and everything, you know, given what's happening right now. There's certainly, everything is available remotely at this point.
Okay, good, and just clear something up for, for me, anyway. As an alternate, does she sit at every zoning hearing or only as called on?
Only as called on, it's typically strongly recommended to attend to, you know, know what is going on with the zoning hearing board in the business of, will we have hearings? But it is only really as called upon technically in terms of the official capacity.
So at this time, Erica had drafted a resolution that was in your packet. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the resolution, appointing Diane Garvin to the position of zoning hearing board alternate for the unexpired three-year term ending 12/31/2020. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Rick made the motion, Spencer seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How did we get this signed?
I can, Erica, I can send this out electronically and get everybody to sign it that way, that would be easier.
That'd be great.
Okay, so we'll do that, look for an email tomorrow signing. This comes from a third-party email, it's going to be called DocuSign, so I'll send it out to everybody. Just look for that, follow the prompts, and you'll be able to sign it. Moving on, new business, we have nothing under new business, so we're going to move into some old business. DCED Watershed Restoration Grant Program, CMS4 project proposal. And Erica, I'm going to let you bring us up to speed on this one.
Sounds good. At the last meeting, I had brought up the Watershed Restoration Program through DCED that is open. It's a grant opportunity that provides funding for different projects to meet the best management practices on pollutant reduction plan for the MS4 permit for the township. I had met recently with Ed Latchall, the township engineer, John McKee, roadmaster. Talk about the MS4 program and get priorities lined up for the next five years. We have five years to meet the requirements of our MS4. And part of that is addressing impaired streams and doing some projects to meet that, those goals as far as the MS4. This program can provide 85% of the funding towards a capital project. It can also include funding, not just for the capital construction portion of it, but for the construction inspection, engineering, and some minor legal costs that may be associated with things like drainage adjustments and that sort of thing. So we got together, we looked at what could be feasible as part of a project to do. And township control of the site has, is a big factor as part of that. Certainly, there are issues with private properties, but Kennelworth Park being one that met a lot of the goals of the, this program as well as Bickle Run. Kennelworth Park probably has a more competitive application because we have the public park already existing there. We have the Coventry Trail Project, and those things line up with the goals of this program pretty well. Together, those projects, Bickle Run and Kennelworth are just under $300,000. But the township match is just about $40,000, I have these numbers here. And then I also looked at if we just did Kennelworth, which Kennelworth would be a, it would be lower, be almost half of that. And then that would be a match of about $22,000. We had budgeted money in the 2020 budget for MS4. Of course, there are overarching issues with COVID, and we're watching all these things very closely in terms of our income and finances, which I'll go over a little later this evening. But this would be a project we would have to contemplate as part of 2021 and the budget in 2021 and how we're formulating that. This is, just give a little more detail, the impairment is Pigeon Creek and Kennelworth Creek is part of the township and the MS4, how these projects were looked at. And this would be stream bank restoration. These are specifically stream bank restoration projects, which includes buffer plantings and riparian revitalization of these stream banks. We have, I did mention this to the EAC, J-Er with Parks and Rec. This opportunity came to us in our, our meeting very quickly. So over the past two weeks, we've been trying to shape up a competitive series of projects that we could implement in 2021 and moving forward. But I'm happy to answer questions about the total project cost, about the scope, and see how we would want to proceed. We would have to make, you know, have a decision here with the resolution with that commitment to make that grant request. And it is due by the end of this week, July 31st.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
What percentage of the amount that were required by the mandate does this cover? We have a five-year mandate of what we have to do, what percentage is this?
This is, I would say, 45%, maybe 40, maybe that's a little too much. The, this would cover, get us to 44,000, that would be the sediment load reduction, 44,000. And we have 77,000 pounds, I think, that we have to meet as far as the overall five-year goal. So it's pretty significant, we could, you know, get to almost, you know, that's a pretty good chunk in terms of a five-year period. But we know time is elusive, and, you know, unless we have put everything in motion, you know, it can be difficult to achieve these things. But that would get us to about 40 to 45% of meeting that overall requirement for the MS4 program in five years.
But this is what we've been speaking about for a number, couple of years now, is the overall cost, the scope of this. And if we're at 45% or so, we're, you know, this is the equivalent of, I don't know, $400,000 or something. It's a lot of money, you know, and I think we need to take advantage of every penny we can get in the way of grants to get this to happen.
I agree, we finally have a funding source for an unfunded mandate, so I'm in favor of it.
On the resolution, it gives an option one and option two, what's the difference?
The difference is, I looked at both projects combined at that total cost. Here, the grant commitment in the first resolution would be $240,609. The second resolution I provided, it was an option two, which scaled the total project cost back, removing Bickle Run, just to Kennelworth. If it was maybe a little bit more manageable to look at a local match that was a little, you know, less significant. So that would be a total grant request of $126,557.
Oh, okay.
The money that the township is going to be paying, can that be done as in-kind labor?
We did talk about that, I think, you know, John McKee has the ability to do work as well with the crew. And so that, we could factor that into as we refine their proposal. Right now, we have it as construction and costs together. If it was a contractor, giving a bit of a margin and a buffer there. But I know that, at least for the Bickle Run project, that was seen as something a little more manageable for our road crew as opposed to Kennelworth. So, John, I know you're on here, if you wanted to comment at all to that, feel free.
That's, that's correct. You know, the permits that would be applying for, good for two years, I believe, two or more years. So we'd have projects shovel-ready in front of us, ready to go. I think it's time to get the ball rolling.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Any other, any questions or comments from the public? Hearing and seeing none. So we need a motion to authorize the resolution, authorizing the request for a watershed restoration and protection grant in the amount of $240,609. Do I have that motion? Rick made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Rebecca seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Excuse me, this is Evan Brad, can I ask which option it was that the supervisors just adopted? Is it for both projects or just the one?
That was for both projects.
Thank you, Erica.
You're welcome, Evan.
Okay, all right, moving along. You remember at the last meeting, there was a discussion about drafting a resolution supporting the separation of the Pottstown Area Regional Recreation Committee from the Pottstown Metropolitan Regional Planning Committee. In your packet was the resolution that Erica drafted, do I have any comments or questions on that document? So we're going to just go move right to the motion, do I have a motion to approve resolution number 4-2020, authorizing the adoption of North Coventry Township into the Intergovernmental Agreement for the Pottstown Area Regional Recreation Committee dated June 2020?
So moved.
Rebecca made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Spencer seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. In our last meeting, we had asked, we had a discussion on playground cleaning and disinfectant. We asked Erica to do some homework on that, and Erica, would you find out?
Yes, we, John McKee and I have reached out, we received a few quotes regarding the playground cleaning. It's a bit significant in our review, and they're comparable. The first two we had received, Budget Maintenance and ServePro, they're very comparable. The lower of the two was Budget Maintenance at $250 a facility per week. That doesn't, it was $50 for the Hannah Rametto's restroom to be done. So that would factor in the two playgrounds we have in Riverbend, which is not quite open yet because that's been subject of having some new equipment. But for those three, you know, it's 750 a week if, if Riverbend was part of that. And then adding the bathroom to that, that's $800 a week. The other quotes we got were more expensive by about $100 a week for cleaning. And they provide their protocols, they provide the list of their disinfectants. And that's what we have, so a little more significant.
Can we fund that open space?
I wouldn't think so, because parks weren't purchased with open space money.
Yeah, I don't think. We don't have a budget for this.
Well, that's what I was going to ask, is this long-term or does it just coincide with the virus?
Yeah, you know, it's the difficulty about it, it's, you know, 3,000 to possibly 3,500 a month. And then, you know, where we're looking at things in terms of COVID, we're in a difficult spot. Many, many people are, we certainly know that. I think for, you know, summer and fall, certainly, that's something that if we're looking at doing on a weekly basis for the next, you know, few months, that's a cost that, you know, we did not budget that. But that's the reality of what we're looking at.
So the question becomes also, is it effective? If we're doing it once a week and they come on a Monday, you know, how long is that disinfectant good for? Is it good till the end of the day, is it good to the end of the, you just don't know, there's no answer to that. Right now, these playgrounds are closed, everything's closed, as of right now. It'd be my position to keep everything closed at this point, with the numbers rising the way they are. I think it'd be prudent for us to put safety first here and just keep everything closed down. Because I'm not, I'm not sure spending the money is going to be effective, there's no guarantees.
Are there any funding, like a multimodal grant or something that could help us, you know, with this expense?
Would, would it qualify for the emergency reimbursement?
It could, we're tracking expenses for cleaning right now, but that's, it's not an immediate reimbursement. And we would have to process everything with Chester County, who's working to collect municipality data on behalf of FEMA and FEMA. So it's possible, but I can't provide a guarantee.
What's the pleasure?
I, I agree with you, Jim, it's an awful lot of money. We did go out and reestablish the porta potties. I think that was a little different situation, because we did have the fields rented and all. As much as I would like to have the playgrounds open, I just don't see where the money's in the budget, we're already walking a tightrope.
Yeah. I agree.
Now, the porta potties, are they functional at the moment, at the present? And we get this.
They're being cleaned twice a week now. And we've been checking in on things, and Alpine sanitation has been going out, maintaining. We have signs that we had put up, putting, you know, the schedule very clearly of, you know, the expectation for the public. And thus far, it's going fine.
So we have a funding, a line item for that expense?
A line, that, that expense is not quite as difficult to overcome as compared to the, I would say, these expenses here than looking at the playground cleaning. The additional monthly cost was about, oh gosh, 500 maybe to $700, this is, we're talking about thousands.
Well, if we have a sign to use at your own risk, and we have a provision for servicing the porta potties weekly, I would still like for the community to have access to it. Otherwise, if we closed it down, then there's no point in having the porta potties, unless I'm missing something.
The porta potties, yeah, go ahead, Rick.
The porta potties, we talked about the last meeting, because the fields were being rented to the different youth leagues.
Right, that's right.
So they serve a purpose? Okay. So at this point, is there any public comment on this? Anybody have any questions or comment? Okay, hearing none, so at this point, I think we, we stay status quo, keep them closed down the way they have been. And just go forward from here.
We haven't heard from anybody about it, have we? Everybody's complained about it, have?
In general, we've seen minimal phone calls where people are asking, you know, parents are, you know, are they, the playgrounds officially open or closed, we tell them they're closed right now. They're not really upset, they just want to know so they can plan.
And the fields are still available for lease if a group wants to come in, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll table this for now. And revisit if we need to in the, in the future. Okay, we're going to move on to administration supervisors' reports. Rebecca, do you have anything?
No, not today.
Rick, do you have anything?
I think you forgot the vacation policy, Jim.
Oops. Oh, it is, it's right here at the bottom, okay.
Travel policy.
Yeah, let's go backwards. Travel policy, I think we discussed this at our last meeting, about a travel policy for employees of the township and what the policy of the township is going to be if they chose to go to a state that is on the list. Do I have any questions from the board on the policy that was in your packet? Hearing none, Erica, can you just give us the overview of the policy?
Oh, sure. As, as those of you may be aware, we have in the Commonwealth right now this travel advisory and recommendation by Governor Wolf and the governor's office regarding quarantine for 14 days when individuals are traveling to certain states which are on this at-risk, almost hot list, that's what it's been, or hot zone, I should say. That's what has been referred to in the, in the news. I understand there were two more states added over the weekend. It's a list where we have to update every day and look at that in terms of the employees. But this policy puts forth that, while it's a recommendation, the policy of the township is that for non-essential travel, travel outside the Commonwealth for vacation, or really just the definition of, you know, attending an event or, or something where it's a non-essential travel, that you are required to quarantine, you must quarantine for that 14-day period. If you're able to work from home, that's fine, if you are not, you have to take leave that has been accrued in order to do so. And it's really, you know, for everyone's benefit, everyone's health is each other's health at this point. So that's how the policy was crafted. Dan, I don't know if you wanted to mention anything I may have missed?
No, I think it covered it, I think.
And how does this apply to the police association?
It would apply to the non-uniformed and to the police association in looking at the policy for sick time. in looking at the policy for sick time and, you know, calling out for different non-essential leave. I mean, it's really at the discretion of the officer in charge and to the township.
So, yeah, the office, under their collective bargaining agreement, the officer in charge or the chief have full discretion to accept or deny a vacation. It's that broad. So they would have to come to the officer in charge and request the vacation. And he can't, he, in his discretion and using the protocol of the township, I would, I would say that he's going to most likely file the protocol and require quarantine just like any other employee of the township.
Okay, very good. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to adopt a township travel policy as presented?
So moved.
Spencer made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Rick seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Erica, on this one, do I sign this one? Is everybody signing this?
Um, I have here, I actually don't have a signature area. So I think that, Dan, you think I can sign off on this with everyone's vote here?
Yeah, I think you can.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you need the board.
Yep, thank you.
All right, very good. All right, then we'll move back into administration supervisors' reports. Rick, do you have anything?
Now, the open space meetings originally scheduled for more nights been postponed until next month at the regular time meeting. And I'd also, you know, Chris, if you're there, just weigh in and just give off that we got word about the Great Oak Tree and all being the funding provided and so forth.
I do not see Chris on the call tonight. Oh, yeah, I do, Chris, he is there. Sorry, Chris.
Yes, we're very pleased that the, we have finalized the conservation easement on the Boyd property, which has the Great Oak Farm, including that almost 400, we know it's at least over 350 years, but the tree existed when William Penn arrived in 1682. And it is the only registered tree in our township, right off St. Peters Road. And is, was the inspiration for the township logo. But this property is also has a number of other advantages other than the scenic views and tributaries of, and part of Pigeon Creek, which is a high-quality designated creek near its watershed. And it has a Class 1 historical house on it that is currently being renovated. And it is immediately adjacent to our 702-acre Coventry Woods Park that we've created, including the Great Oak Trail, which passes adjacent to this property. So there's a number of reasons why this conservation easement was important. And, you know, we've had an open space table at our Coventry Woods Festival for many years. And almost every year, this property has been designated by the public for, for having a conservation easement on it. And as of July 15th, the conservation easement is in place. So we're very pleased about that. And also, we did get some funding from Chester County, but most of the funding has come from the township for this easement.
Thank you, Chris. You guys worked hard on this for a long time. It's good to see it finally get done.
Sorry, Evan, again, how many acres does that cover?
It's, it's 10 acres, including the house and the tree. But, and as conservation easements go these days, you have very, you know, high restrictions, standard restrictions, which would be like a part of a meadow. And the minimal restrictions, which would be the area immediately adjacent to the house. But it mainly, it certainly on all the areas limits the amount of additional impervious surface you can have on the property. But it, it also governs the maintenance and what can be done with each one of these sections.
And what was the amount?
I'm sorry, Evan, what?
What was the amount, Mr. Washburn?
The dollar amount?
Yes, sir.
It, including the expenses and the endowment and everything else, is not included in this number, but it was $150,000.
And how much of that was township money?
130.
Thank you very much, sir.
Evan, there's a press release on our website that came from Natural Lands that has it all spelled out there.
Oh, okay, thanks, Jim.
Sure. Okay, Rick, anything else? Okay, I have a couple of things. The Pottstown Regional Planning Commission met last week online. The biggest thing that came out of that meeting was the retirement of John Cover. He announced that as of this past Friday, he was retiring. John had been with the Montgomery County Planning Commission, I don't know how many years, but he's, he's been with the regional committee since, I think it's 2005 when it first started. He, along with Andy Paravis and other municipalities, started that, that group way back then. And last week was his last meeting and he retired on Friday. So I would like for the township to send a letter of appreciation and thanks to John for, for all his years of service and guidance. He's a Montgomery County guy who reached across the river to East Coventry and North Coventry and brought us into that group and made the region a better place because of it. So I'd ask Erica to draft a letter if you would. And then I would like to sign that and we'll send that off to John.
Yep, absolutely.
Secondly, prior to the meeting, I got a question about donations to the fire company and if the letters had gone out earlier this year, which they had not because of COVID and all the challenges for it. This past weekend, the fire company's website went live, hopefully you can see that, with a donate, a way to donate right from the fire company website. So there you go, there, there's different places you can hit donate. You click the donate button and it'll bring you up a place where people can donate directly through credit card and PayPal, it can be done right here. So please pass the word. I did attend the fire company meeting last month. Money is definitely tight. Most of their fundraising activities have been canceled, that includes bingo. There was no fair this year. All of their normal fundraising activities have been put on hold. They did hold a chicken barbecue this past weekend and it was very successful. They sold out of chickens very quickly. I don't know the total yet of what money they raised, but the parking lot had a line of cars in it. And it was pickup, so the cars drove up, they handed out the meals and off they went. And that was very successful. So just ask you, keep the fire company in mind. I know these times are difficult, but they're, they're difficult for the company as well. And lastly, 1778 St. Peters. Any, any updates on that? I was out, I was actually out there a couple of weeks ago. The grass does look better. I wouldn't say good, but it looks much better and the cars and all, everything is still a mess. So we have any updates?
Oh, I can just fill you in. I did have an opportunity to talk to Chuck Gardner. And, you know, he assured me he is trying to work with the property owner to cooperate and make certain improvements and remediate conditions. Particularly, I know there's been an issue with the cars that are sitting out front. At least landscaping is, you know, at least controlled for right now. But he wanted to assure me he's, he is trying to make progress. And for the property owner, the Las Vegas living next door, he certainly understands what they are going through and had offered to, you know, provide some assistance and just continue that communication. So on his behalf, I wanted to share that.
Thank you. Karen, you have anything you want to add?
Hi, yes, thank you. Erica, is there any type of a, I mean, is there any deadlines imposed on, on Mr. Rock as far as when he needs to comply with what the township is asking them to do?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay. Or is it just kind of, is it really all in his court and he can just do it on his own timeline? That's what I'm, I'm not understanding.
As far as I'm, I understand the exterior issues, right now he's meeting his timeline with the landscaping. The vehicles are a different story because we need to have certain information in order to move forward with understanding what he's going to be doing with that. He's, I think, expressed that other antiques, it's a project, he's working on this. So we don't, we don't have a timeline based on that. And we need more information to go by him to allow us to have more approval for entry, that kind of thing, where we do not have any other violation notices outstanding.
Is there, from a township board perspective, is there, is there going to be any deadlines imposed? Or can there be? I didn't know.
I don't know that we can, right? That's why we're looking for a way to do that, but.
Erica, how many vehicles are there at this point?
I think there are two.
And they're not, are they registered vehicles or?
I, I, yeah, I am not sure, Dan. I would, I'll have to talk to Ron.
They may qualify as a junkyard and that's anywhere you can get into.
I would doubt very much. I would doubt very much.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would.
If they're not registered, you may be able to qualify and then cite them or threaten to cite them.
Hey, Jim, it's John Worth. We, we, you know, BOS meetings in the past. And I believe what Ron said is those vehicles that still remain are actually historical vehicles. They're not registered. They've got the historical plates and so the rules are a little bit different. That's what I recall from previous meetings.
Okay, thanks, John. All right, we can explore that angle and just confirm it with Ron, I guess, and see if that's an avenue we can go down.
I just want to say thank you to the board that you are keeping on top of this. We really do appreciate it.
Well, I have, I have one thing I wanted to bring up. That's why I interrupted you.
Yep.
Well, a couple of members of the historical commission asked about meeting, having our meetings at the Temple Church Pavilion. But then, in thinking it over and all, I was wondering why we're not using the township building at this point? Can't we just meet at the township building or, or not? I don't know.
I think at this point.
Or do we have a plan to reopen part of the township building?
We do not have a plan to reopen any part of the township building to the public at this point out of, out of concern for the police officers and the administrative staff, especially now that numbers are, it seems to be increasing. It would not be prudent to do that. I, you know, I, I would much prefer that you meet, I know this is hard, to meet virtually rather than to meet in person. I just don't think it's a risk that you guys should be taking. And there's ways around it. Erica can help you, you know, try to set something up virtually that you can meet somehow or even a phone call or some, some way to do it where you don't have to be together in the same room. That would be my preference.
Yeah, what about the pavilion? Do you think that should be no at this point or? Because it certainly would be large enough to be distant.
I mean, if you're, I don't, if you're meeting off-site and you decide to do that and you practice social distancing and you all wear masks and, and be careful, then I think it's up to the individuals at that point. I, I mean, Stan, Erica, anybody else want to weigh in?
I'll canvas, I'll canvas the membership and see what it would be.
I just don't want to put anybody in harm's way.
Oh, definitely, yeah.
Yeah. And we don't know what, we don't know what that is. You know, you just don't know what that is. You don't know where the harm is. And so to do something, you know, just, just be careful. All right, sorry I skipped over you there. Erica, we're on to you now.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll just go right into COVID. I think we're all, you know, inundated with information, but just to touch on things, the governor came out on July 16th and had updated increased mitigation measures due to rising cases. We have, you know, we assist with phone calls, you know, regarding the reduction in the capacity from 50% to 25% for, you know, restaurants and that sort of thing. Outdoor events and gatherings, no more than 250 persons. Continuing to, you know, put information out from the governor and the health department, of course. We are certainly watching all of this and the, the cases, you know, for Chester County. You know, this is a daily thing that we are doing to watch out for what is happening in terms of COVID and responding properly. I, now going, shifting gears a little bit on road work. As we've had some really high temperatures, but the road crew started their paving project today for East Meadow Brook Road. They'll be continuing that through the rest of this week. And the road is closed and through traffic, open for emergency response and for residents, keep them able to get to their properties. And that with the Chester County Solid Waste Authority last week at Recycling Services, Inc., that was a tour to learn about what's been going on with the progress of cleaning up that site. I know that's an effort of the nonprofit for RSI, the Solid Waste Authority. There's a lot of progress made to that, it was very interesting. I know that the authority has tasked their engineering staff to come up with some concepts for the operation of that facility for the public, which I know they're, they're still working on refining that scope of what materials to accept, what that's going to look like. So I'm, you know, certainly new to understating what's involved, but I think that's a really, you know, a nice opportunity for something in the township. The Chester County Solid Waste Authority is conducting two drive-through household hazardous waste events. And this is their first for quite a while due to COVID. And they're going to be held Saturday, August 1st, coming up here and Sunday, August 2nd, from 8:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Chester County Intermediate Unit Learning Center in Coatesville. You have to register online so that information is available. You remain in your car. If you're concerned, you know, what can I bring? What's household hazardous waste? Please check into the information they have available. The EAC conducted their latest webinar last week. Thank you to Jesse Schiffler, who presented on native plants and the landscape. It was very interesting, lots of great before and after photos of different native species and meadows and a lot of work that she has done herself on her own property. And that is available to be watched on the township website. The next one's coming up on August 18th from 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And that's the Hidden Lives of North Coventry Township Frogs and Salamanders. And September 15th, same time Hawk Identification for Beginners. So, you know, appreciate every volunteer who is putting their time forward for these series. In terms of township finances, township staff, we've analyzed the information now for the six-month period, January. In terms of township finances, uh, township staff, we've analyzed the, uh, information now for the six-month period, January through June thirty, twenty twenty. Total revenue collected, including taxes, fees and intergovernmental revenues year-to-date is three million, four hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and six dollars. In the general fund representing seventy-two percent of our total budgeted income for the year. On the expense side, our actual budget figures, uh, with total expenses are two million, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. Representing forty-six point nine percent of the budgeted spending. While this, uh, while the revenues are stable, we don't know these, these next few months what's gonna be happening with returns, um, earned income tax, the real estate collection. Please consider, you know, we collect those taxes in the beginning of the year, you know, the first and second quarter. So as far as, uh, expenses, that, that is lining up with where we need to be, but we have to be, be very vigilant, uh, looking at the forward. The next few months of this fiscal year, we will be getting underway with a budget for twenty twenty-one here. Uh, need to think early, uh, on that and. Start putting some, some numbers together and thinking forward. So that is, uh, the financial update. And then as far as zoning hearing, we've been busy. We had, uh, a zoning hearing held last week regarding Keith and Karen Place, uh, thirteen twenty-six Temple Road. They were seeking relief of their two-car, or a proposed two-car attached garage with a setback, uh, request of three feet and, um. And they were, they had a non-conforming setback of twenty-five feet. Uh, they were denied their application and, um. Part of the discussion was, you know, come back, uh, perhaps look at your property and possibly re-engineer a plan that could maybe be a little more suitable. The zoning hearing, uh, pertaining to an application to Francesco Sotiro, one fifty-nine Main Road, that is scheduled for August thirteenth at seven PM on Zoom again. And this is, uh, the developed, uh, land development of property for the purposes of constructing a single-family detached dwelling and driveway. This was, uh, looked at and acknowledged last, or two weeks ago. And, um, we're looking at, as the township, uh, getting some more information, being involved in that, that is, uh, an application where they're, they want to exceed the allowable ten percent wetland margin. Of upwards, almost to fifty percent of the property for this proposed development. So.
Dan, did you reach out to their attorney?
They, uh, Erica, as far as I know, he doesn't have an attorney, right? I mean.
I, I do not believe he does either.
I don't think he has an attorney. I did attempt to reach out to him directly.
Okay.
I don't know if he's gonna communicate with me, to be honest with you, but, um, I did attempt.
Okay, yeah.
And so at this point, what's the plan?
The plan is, I, my understanding is you want me to participate and, uh, assert that, uh, the issues with respect to the wetland and, uh. I do have, I do think that we need to get something from LTL with respect to their, their issues and present that to the, to the board. Yeah, and then I don't think there's anything further we need to do.
That we've asked LTL to provide that?
I have the review letters that were completed, uh, but no, uh, additional specific, specific request. And maybe you and I get together on that.
Yeah, I'll reach out. That's fine.
Okay.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Erica, is that it?
That's it.
That's good. All right. Public comment. We have any comments from the public? Okay, very good. I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. We are having an executive session. The executive session pertains to personnel and litigation matters. This time I'm gonna ask, um, everyone to, to sign off unless you're a board member or Erica or, or Dan. And we'll see you in two weeks' time. Thank you, everybody.